We're in the intro, stand by for countdown.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner. How are you, sir?
Good morning, Adrian.
Good morning. You said Red Cross proclamation.
Sure. As soon as I catch my breath from running up the steps. Oh, where's my chairs?
Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the Wednesday, March 16th, 2022 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Communications Director. March is American Red Cross Month, and we would like to honor the folks' part of this life-saving mission, individuals across the country who turn compassion into action, helping others in times of crises. This celebration has been an annual tradition since 1943. And to highlight this month, this important month, we pulled up the Facebook page, Red Cross Month Celebration Wichita. To celebrate, the Red Cross is partnering with Head-to-Toe Hygiene Pantry to mark the occasion. Volunteers will be offering home fire safety tips and resources, and there will be sign-ups for free smoke alarm installations. Head-to-toe hygiene will be given out hygiene items at the event. An average, they serve 500 families a month. Please visit redcross.org for more information. Commissioners, March Madness is upon us, with InTrust Bank hosting the Women's Sweet 16 and Elite Aid Competition starting March 26. With all those fans gathered in one place, the Sedgwick County Health Department is holding a special COVID-19 vaccination clinic. Health Department Director Adrian Byrne is here to tell us more about that and other efforts the Health Department is working on.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So, March Madness has given me the opportunity to come today and talk briefly about our mobile clinics. So, on the March 26th, when the women's tournament is occurring, we will be at Natska Park, 1:00 to 5:00. Adult and pediatric doses are available. That'll be Johnson &amp; Johnson and Pfizer. So, so far, in the last 13 months, we've done 494 mobile clinics, and that is a combination of county staff going to various places, and also a lot of the partnerships that we've had with partners in Sedgwick County. So, our upcoming focuses are going to be on long-term care facilities and other residential and day programs, areas with high social vulnerability, and areas with low vaccination rate. So, Spring Festival, and I love the slides that Robin has put together. So, our next Spring Festival that we're doing with a partner, which is the Managed Care Organizations of Aetna, Sunflower Health, Planted United Healthcare. It's going to be on April 1st and 2nd. And they are focusing on their members, and they will have a mobile mammogram clinic. And then, we will be there providing childhood immunizations to not only their members, but anyone else in Sedgwick County that needs to be up to date or it's time for their immunization. We'll also have the person that puts the balloon characters together to try to make it fun for kids. We have planned mobile vaccination clinics, 46 that we've planned, upcoming clinics. We still have partners reaching out to us for clinics, and then, we are continuing to reach out to partners and those zip codes that we know are low in vaccination rate. So, we had them set up, the United Way, at homeless shelters, recurring events at Wichita Public Library branches, and then, many partner clinics with Wichita Black Nurses Association. And that is the end of my presentation.
Well, thank you, Adrian. You actually brought us two important messages today. First one, of course, is dealing with the vaccine. We still need to have people get the vaccine. We're seeing a resurgence in China. We're seeing a resurgence in Europe right now. So, please don't let the guard down. Get the vaccine if you haven't gotten it. If you haven't gotten the booster, make sure you get that. But the second important theme you brought us today is about the NCAA tournament coming to the InTrust Bank Arena. I know that I've talked to the Commissioners and the staff. There's a lot of us getting tickets. And believe it or not, for $45, you can get a ticket to attend every single game. So, it's a great opportunity for everyone, so I urge you to join us at the InTrust Bank Arena for the Women's NCAA. So, thanks for those two messages.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing up the importance of still being vaccinated. There are a lot of providers in Sedgwick County where people can get vaccinated. COVID is still in our community. People are still getting sick. We're getting, we are down greatly from where we were in January, when we were having as many as 10,000 cases a week. But we still are getting reports and need to follow up on people, so please be vaccinated.
Very good. Well, just don't let's dunk our ground. We just found out this week that our hospitalizations are extremely low. Our positivity rate's extremely low, but it doesn't mean that the next variant can't come and attack the health of our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there's a proclamation declaring it American Red Cross Month. You accept the resignation of John Burke from the District 2 Advisory Board. There are four appointments to the MABCD Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air Heating. A resolution appointing David D. Urban to the MABCD Board of Electrical Appeals. A resolution appointing various members to the MABCD Board of Appeals of the Plumbers and Gas Fitters for Sedgwick County. A resolution appointing Commissioners to various boards and committees. And then, under New Business, a report of the Board and Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting with Chairman Dennis. I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Akeem. I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone who's in the audience today. Those who are joining us online and by TV. We don't have an extensive agenda today. I do have our Communications Department working right now very diligently, because I handed them a whole bunch of pictures a little bit ago, and they're going to try and turn it into a PowerPoint that I can show during other today to discuss a trip that I took to Phoenix and back yesterday to see the Phoenix biomedical facility out there. So, stay tuned, if you will, for the PowerPoint that I have during other today. With that, thank you all, and I'd like to call the meeting to order for March 16th, 2022. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
In vocation, to be led by Pastor Daniel Refner, Alders Gate United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, friends. It's good to be with you today. As I come to lead us in prayer, I'm aware of the fact that we come to this place with different levels of belief and different understandings about who God is and what prayer means. And so, instead of praying in just words that are significant to my own tradition, I would like to invite us to a prayer for wisdom. For if a divine God does exist, and I believe it does, surely there is some divine wisdom that can guide us and lead us today. So, will you pray with me? O gracious and holy God, we pause this morning to humble ourselves before your mystery and before the tasks that are before us. We confess that too often, we trust in our own wisdom to solve the vast problems that are before us. We forget that we are limited, and we forget that true wisdom comes only from you. And so, we call upon you and upon your holy wisdom to draw close to us this hour. Come to our aid, that we would notice the ways you seek to lead and guide us. Inspire our hearts, that we may be a people moved to act with wisdom and great care as we build a more just, compassionate, and flourishing community. May it be so. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We had one item come in last night by email. I have not seen anything coming in public, so I move that we receive and file the item that came in by email. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring American Red Cross Month.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas, in times of crisis, people in Sedgwick County come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas, in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Sedgwick County who continue to carry out Kara's life-saving legacy. And whereas, Sedgwick County Red Cross volunteers join the millions of people across the United States who give hope to the most vulnerable in the darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, donating essential blood, supporting service members and veterans, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas, their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back to our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. With that, Chairman, I will adopt, make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner? Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of John Burke from the Sedgwick County Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. Item B is to accept the resignation of John Burke from Commissioner Lopez's Citizens Advisory Board on her recommendation. Ask that you accept the resignation.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, this one hits kind of hard. John is an incredible man, and I'm very sad that he is moving out of my district and into David Dennis's district, so you are very lucky to have him. He was superintendent for Hayesville Public Schools for 18 years and just retired last year. He really took this district in an entirely new direction, and now, my children get a benefit from everything that he's done there. So, he's an incredible person. I'm very, very sad to see him go, but thank him for his time on the board. So, I move that we accept his resignation.
Well, thank you very much, and I will gladly accept that, because maybe I can get him onto my Citizens Advisor Board in the future. So, we have a motion and a second any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Scott E. Smith to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air Heating.
Mr. Papoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I would suggest taking Item C, D, E, and F together, since they all involve the same board. These are appointments to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department's Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air Heating. Item C is the appointment of Scott Smith, who is going to be the mechanical engineer position on this board. Item D is Randy Freeman, who is going to be a joint public at-large position. Item E is William Lowenstein, who will be the master contractor position. And Item F is Jesse Keely, who is the journeyman mechanical position. These are joint boards. This is a joint board with the City of Wichita. These are four of our appointments, and we've prepared resolutions appointing all four of these individuals. Ask that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. I move to approve Item Charlie Delta Echo and Foxtrot.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing David D. Urban to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, Board of Electrical Appeals.
Mr. Papoon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another joint board with the City of Wichita. An appeals board for MABCD. It's the Board of Electrical Appeals. We are recommending the appointment of David Urban to this board. We have prepared a resolution appointing Mr. Urban and ask that you approve the resolution. By the way, he has a journeyman electrician position for this board.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. Move to approve Item Golf. We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item H, resolutions reappointing various members positions to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, Board of Appeals of the Plumbers and Gas Fitters for Sedgwick County.
Mr. Papoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are all reappointments. We are recommending and have resolutions prepared to appoint Mr. Michael Lees for the master plumber residential position, reappointing Bo Means to the master plumber service and repair position, Seth Harrington to the journeyman plumber position, and Sean Conway to the mechanical engineering position. And Larry Dougherty is the joint appointment at large by the city and the county. Also recommending reappointing Mr. Dougherty. All five resolutions are in proper form. Ask that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. Move that we approve Item Hotel. We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item I, resolutions appointing Commissioners to various boards and committees.
Mr. Papoon, are you briefing this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy to, or you can step in. We are recommending, on your behalf, the appointments of Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Howell to a one-year term for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Recommending Commissioner Howell to a one-year appointment for the Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center Board, and recommending that Commissioner Meitzner be appointed to WSU Tech Board. And we've prepared resolutions for all of these appointments and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. I move that we approve Item India.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
New business. Item J, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on March 10th, 2022.
Thank you. Joe, welcome.
Welcome. I'm glad to be here, and I'm ecstatic as early as it is. Couldn't hardly believe it.
This is about the earliest you've ever been.
Yes, I did, yes. Well, good morning to Chairman and Commissioners. The meeting, regular meeting of Board of Bids and Contracts on March 10th results in three items that we're presenting to you this morning. The first one is the 2022 NOVA chip. That recommendation is to accept, and it's for public work, excuse me. The recommendation is to accept a low bid from Conspec Incorporated. That's also doing business as Kansas Paving, and it's in the amount of $5,693,597.61. Item two is oblique aerial imagery for a praiser's office. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Pictometry International Corp., and that's in the amount of $211,633. This contract period begins January 1st, 2023, and goes through December 31st, 2026. And our final item is N4 for Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from N4 for five-year maintenance and support contract renewal, and that's in the amount of $657,404.43. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thomas? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. So, the oblique aerial imagery, is that sole source bid?
Yes, sir. It's a continuation of the contract, or contractor we've used in the past. Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else out there that does that job?
I think it's unique, but let's see. Do we have... okay. I believe it's pretty unique. There are other ways of doing it, but I believe this particular method is unique with this vendor.
I'm looking at the backup material. It says this is required every six years.
Yes, sir.
Seems like we just did this well back.
The last flight was in 2017, and they must, before the spring of 2023, complete the flight before it has to be done manually, is my understanding.
All right. That's all my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Move to approve Boards of Bids and Contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items K through M.
Thank you. I move that we approve Item Kilo through Mike.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Morning, Tanya. This is the quickest we've ever been on this issue.
I agree. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. This is the final week for non-exempt committees to meet and pass out bills. When legislators return on March 21st, it will be for all-day floor sessions. The following week, conference committees meet, and adjournment is scheduled for April 1st with veto session starting on April 25th. And as I mentioned, last week, we continue to follow actions on funding that pertain to our legislative platform items. I just have a couple updates. House Bill 2676, that is our bill authorizing counties to create a code inspection enforcement fund and expanding the scope of the Equipment Reserve Fund to include other computers and electronic technologies. This bill passed on House General Orders yesterday, and so, now, it goes on to final action in the House. And once that passes, it'll do the same on the Senate side. Last Friday, I sent you some information on Senate Bill 505. That's an act concerning zoning and planning relating to regulation of home-based work, prohibiting the enactment and enforcement of zoning regulations that are barriers to home-based work enacting the Protect Home-Based Work Act. Both KEC and the League of Municipalities have provided opposition testimony, and I asked Justin Wagner to be here this morning and provide some analysis on that bill, so I'd like to hand it over to Justin Wagner real quick.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. As Tanya summarized, Senate Bill 505. And really, it prevents municipalities from having provisions in place impacting... It really limits the ability for municipalities to regulate through zoning what can occur with home-based work. Currently, Sedgwick County, in our joint zoning code with the City of Wichita, there are certain rural home occupations that, and these were last amended in 2013. A subcommittee was created, and the Board of County Commissioners unanimously adopted a set of provisions. And really, what you're talking about here is kind of the balance between allowing people to use, have a business based out of their home, but also balancing that with the concerns about the impacts of that business impacting their neighbors externally. And so, Sedgwick County does have those provisions in place. If this bill's passed, then our provisions would more or less be wiped out. The, as Tanya noted, the KEC, League of Municipalities, and a handful of other municipalities, it did indicate opposition on this bill. What it would do, and some of the noteworthy items, would be that a rural, a home occupation could have an unlimited number of employees working out of a residential property. A home occupation could have an unlimited number of commercial vehicles parked at a residential property. A home business could have unlimited outdoor storage of equipment related to the in-home business. The only limitation on that would be if the outdoor storage would create a nuisance. The term nuisance is not defined in the bill. The bill would not allow local governments to enact hours of operation on home businesses. Our code does not have hours of operation, but it's worth pointing out, because there are provisions in place to impact the other externalities, like limiting the number of full-time employees at the business, things like that. The concerns with hours of operation probably aren't present so much. The Senate Bill 505 would allow a home occupation to construct an accessory structure of unlimited size for operation of that business. And Senate Bill 505 would prohibit municipalities from having provisions that would address noise, odors, vibration, those types of things. Our code currently has those items in place, so that if, even if the activity may be occurring inside, recognize there could be impacts with noise, odor, vibration. But we would not be able to have that in place if Senate Bill 505 would pass. I think some of the concern from talking, some with planning staff, a little bit also with MABCD staff, would be the, that there would certainly, you may hear from constituents who may have complaints about these uses going on next to them, and that our hands would essentially be tied if this bill is passed. Also, I think one of the biggest things that people expect local government to do on local control is the enactment and enforcement of local zoning codes. And this would essentially have the state legislature taking that over to some degree. I'd be happy to stand for any questions on this.
Questions for Justin? I guess I have a question. You know, I served on the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission for nine years, and we had several cases that involved this exact thing on home businesses and the impact it was going to have on the neighbors. And all of these different protections are in place to be able to protect the neighborhood. We've talked about, as I recall, some welding operations and car maintenance repair.
We've talked about, as I recall, some welding operations and car maintenance repair organizations and businesses. So do we have any estimation on what the chances are that this might pass?
I'll comment that I believe... Is Jason on the call, Tom, at all? Okay. He's not? Okay. I believe Jason Watkins indicated that this bill has pretty good momentum in Topeka.
Well, if this has got a chance of passing, I think we need to take some kind of position on it, you know, and send it up to our leaders in Topeka and let them know that this takes away local control. One of the things that we pride ourselves on is local control. And once again, the state legislature is deciding that they know better on how to control nuisances and problems in the neighborhoods than the local governments. So I don't know if any other commissioners have the same kind of concerns as I do, but I've got some significant concerns about this. Commissioner Lopez.
Really fast. What did you say KAC's stance was on this?
They're in opposition to it.
Can we send something with what their opposition is?
I might defer some to Mike Papoon here. I'd point out there was a committee hearing on Monday. And then my understanding from when they finished up that committee meeting is that tomorrow, that same committee is going to meet and work a handful of potential bills, with this being one of the bills that they may end up working on that. So we can't submit legislative testimony to the committee, but I defer to Mike in terms of what mechanisms the board might utilize to oppose this bill at this point.
Well, my understanding is it's just still in the Senate at this point.
That's correct.
So it hasn't received a hearing in the House. Doesn't mean it couldn't end up in a conference committee report somehow. But I would suggest we could still let our House members know and senators know that we oppose this legislation. If it's being worked... What do you say it's being worked?
Tomorrow.
If it's being worked tomorrow, we still have time to get to contact members of that committee, let them know our opposition to the bill. We still have time before it goes to the Senate floor, letting our delegation know that we're opposed to it. So those are steps we could take.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin, did you talk about how they plan to regulate this? Did you mention that?
I didn't...
Like, what's the steps?
Commissioner Cruz, I didn't talk about the regulation of it. And really, I mean, it's one of those things where these are codes that are regulated locally by cities and counties. So we would still have to regulate the code. We'd certainly have to amend our zoning code in terms of kind of... It's not called an enforcement or a regulation term, but there would be a provision in the bill that allows a property owner who believes their property value has been decreased, that it may have been decreased, or that their use has been restricted in violation of this bill, to get a separate court hearing, separate and apart from any other zoning actions. Traditionally, parties would have to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, but this bill would create a separate cause of action. And so that's kind of an enforcement measure that I think if this passed, that would be in place for property owners to ensure that municipalities would follow it. Also, there's a provision that any attorney's fees would be awarded to the prevailing party. That's probably more in favor of a property owner who would hire legal counsel. A lot of municipalities have in-house legal counsel, don't necessarily have legal fees on that. And there are a lot of ambiguous terms, I would add, in the bill. So there's a lot of potential for these things to end up in court if this bill gets passed, just because there are a lot of places where it's unclear.
Okay. That just seems kind of... I would be in favor of Commissioner Lopez's suggestion of kind of getting with KAC. I think it's... We have a pretty robust system at our Planning Commission that can handle these kinds of things. I'd hate to lose that and put more steps in place for property owners and businesses to have to jump through. So I would be in support of opposing this.
Commissioner Howell, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that I would support it at this point. I'm not gonna support a letter at this point. So to me, just looking at this bill, I don't think it's got much of a chance of passage. So we can speak to it if we want to, but I think this is an issue of property rights versus local control. And I think both of those topics are important. And I hate to divide my allegiance, if you will, to both those two topics. I think that they're both incredibly important. But if we pick a side, then it might be assumed we don't support the other side. So I think this is more political than it used to be, and I don't think this bill's gonna go anywhere. It's just hit the first step. It had a hearing in the Commerce Committee. It has not passed the committee. And it's got a long ways to go, and it's only got, literally, I think, about 10 days left in the session at this point. So again, it's an interesting idea, but having a new concept introduced at this point in the session is just unlikely to go forward. So I would rather not speak to it. I do have some other comments on other legislative issues when you're ready, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
We'll let KAC carry the water for us at this point in time, but I have some significant concerns. We saw a case where that, like, a landscaper in the middle of a residential neighborhood had 10 or 12 large trucks parked. Nobody else could get near their home. They had, then when the workers came to work, they left all their vehicles in the street, and none of the neighbors could get near their homes. So there are issues that happen with a case like this if you remove all the restrictions that we've got. So it's just a bad idea for Topeka to think that they know how to run our community better than we know how to run our community.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a couple of comments. Would it be all right? Would it be the will of the majority of the commission to allow staff to engage in efforts to oppose this bill at the level of Topeka? I don't know that we can necessarily rely on the fact that it won't pass if we think it's a bad bill, and we do think it's a bad bill.
No, I think Scott Watt will be up there briefing this and possibly MABCD with Chris to show what kind of impact. I'm not sure Chris would have as much impact as Scott, because Scott runs the zoning code.
I just want a little history on this bill. To my knowledge, we haven't had an issue of this in Kansas. This was being brought forward by some group out of Florida connected to some, I don't know what agenda, dealing with issues around other areas around the country. But it seems to me a little bit suspect for them to come into Kansas, where we didn't have a problem, and create new legislation for us under the guise of property rights. But anyway, we'd appreciate the support of the commission to oppose this bill.
Very good. Well, with nine years of MAPC and five years doing this, it's 14 years that I've seen this kind of things come up. And we protect our community by having our zoning regulations in place. So I do not think that it's a good idea to mess up with our zoning regulations. Okay, Justin, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
All right. Tanya, what else you got?
That's all I have this morning, Commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Just a couple other things to talk about. So we ought to be looking for a vehicle on HB 2676 because at this late time in the session, I don't know, we have time for a committee hearing and all of that on the Senate side. So if there's a vehicle to conference that into, we need to find that. So I'd be looking for that opportunity now to conference 2676 into something else that's maybe already more advanced in legislative status. HB 2200, which is the juvenile justice bill this year that's, I call it a trailer bill for Senate Bill 376 that passed in 2016. I testified on that bill in favor, as well as District Court Judge Kevin Smith did as well. And it was really quite a good hearing, I thought. But HB 2200 unfortunately was... Nothing's really ever dead in Topeka, but as of right now, this bill is dead. So it's not going to go any further this year. And I think we need to continue to monitor this policy issue. And I think we need to be ready to engage this topic again next year. But right now, House Bill 2200 has hit the end of the line for this year. Senate Bill 53, that's a charter commission. I have a question, first of all. Have we spent any significant time trying to lobby that forward? Have we talked, has Jason been talking to legislators? Do we know what efforts we've put out trying to get that to move forward?
Not to my knowledge. Mike, I might lean on you a little bit on that. Do you have anything to comment on that?
You know, we have discussed trying to move that bill forward with Mr. Watkins, but it's been his impression that it wasn't going to go anywhere. That because of issues in Johnson County and some disdain by some of their legislators with their charter commission, that it was kind of like, kind of a dead-end situation. And so I don't know how much time Jason has spent lobbying this particular issue.
Well, it's interesting that that's the narrative. I actually see the charter commission in Johnson County protected the sheriff. The idea that the sheriff would be appointed and work for the commission was an idea that the commissioners wanted, but the charter commission killed that, which is now... But the fact that that topic was raised is now tying into a constitutional amendment potentially to protect our elected sheriffs of our state, to make sure that they are always elected rather than appointed. And Riley County has a problem, because they've already moved it to an appointed position in Riley County. But that constitutional amendment is born from this discussion. But I guess as I look at this, I think the charter commission in Johnson County actually protected. And in terms of the public hearings on that, they had numerous public hearings. And I would say it was a very big public fight. But the people who really were the loudest in those public hearings were absolutely adamant that the sheriff would be an elected official. So I think in this case, the charter commission did its job and protected the better form of government. And so, once again, the charter commission would strip power from the commissioners here and hand it over to a 25-member community board that would determine the best structure of county government. I understand that... Please, Mr. Papoon, I do have a technical question. If we don't have the charter commission, and the commission here would make a choice to restructure county government, does that always have to go to the people, or is there a way... Is there any type of restructuring that is done by supermajority vote here?
Any vote this commission would take to involve restructuring government in terms of expanding the county commission, eliminating or consolidating elected offices, would have to go to the people for a vote. There's no commission, supermajority vote that would allow that to happen.
All right. Okay. And if something like that was proposed this year, would it be on... Does it have to be on a particular election cycle, election type?
With regard to the elimination or consolidation of elected offices, it would have to be in an election year that the governor was running for election.
So for the example, November 2022 would be one option, and the next option would be four years away.
That's true.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's good to know that, I guess. In terms of the phrase "Topeka knows better than we do", I would just like to point out, you know, these are policy choices that are debated in the public. Those are the legislators that are elected by the people also. And they are doing, they're exercising their authority given to them by the Constitution. We might disagree on whether they should or should not do something, but they certainly have the authority to do that. So I want to make sure I show respect to our legislators that we... I reflect on, you know, sometime... There was legislation in the past that I worked on that I had the very same argument from local government. And the reason those items were being discussed at the state level were because there were some bad players at the local level. And it causes the conversations to happen at the state level. And so imagine, maybe we're great here in Sedgwick County. We do it right. But maybe there's a community out there somewhere in the state that's very, very regulatory and maybe against property rights. And so that situation has caused this discussion to happen at the state level. I assume that's the genesis of this. That's usually what it is. I mean, some of the legislation I worked on personally, that was exactly what was going on. There were bad players in the state. They did not understand constitutional principles. And so we had to legislate, if you will, solutions to bringing local government back in line with constitutional ideas. And so this idea of, you know, property rights is obviously, you know, it's a very difficult topic. And I know that the legislators are going to do the very best they can to make sure that the policy is right. So I don't want to disrespect them in any way. I trust what they do. At the end of the day, I do think we do a great job here in Sedgwick County. But I think the debate needs to stay focused on the policy and the subject matter we're debating today, not get personal with the folks up there. So that's all I've got right now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else for legislative?
That is all I have, sir.
Very good. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Seeing nothing, next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Any Commissioners have anything for committee reports? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. First of all, Pastor, while you're still here, thank you for the service, the prayer this morning. And I'm gonna use wisdom in filling out my brackets for the basketball tournaments. Thank you. Timely, very timely. On the other front, Commissioner Cruz and I were able to attend the Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting Saturday morning. And we just usually give an update of county activity. And we got into a rather robust update. There was 10 mayors present of the 20 cities and a robust interest in our efforts on the mental health world, but mainly separating out the support for a state mental health hospital here in this region, and the expansion of the mental health hospitals system to our region. So it was not only... It was discussed with great passion and in support. And they all have their own stories about citizens in their communities needing our crisis center, but also the state mental health services. So with that, they ended up having a vote. We are not officially voters in this as the county. But they voted to do resolutions within each of their cities to a resolution of support for the state to support expanding a 50-bed mental health hospital in the Sedgwick County region. So that was unexpected, but warmly received. And the Director, Laura Rainwater, put together a resolution for all the cities to pass in their various... And they sent us a copy of it. And we tried to make sure it was accurate with its information on the wherlasses and all that. So that was what I had to report. And Commissioner Cruz was there as well and explained a lot of stuff and was able to answer questions. So it was, that was a good Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting Saturday morning. That's all.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Meitzner. I appreciate you bringing that up. I think that there's a lot of confusion on what our projects are that we're pushing. And people keep kind of mixing them together so that they don't understand where we're going. There's really three major projects that we're asking for right now. One is a regional mental health facility, and by that I mean somewhere in the region. It doesn't have to be in Sedgwick County, but somewhere in this area. And by mental health facility, I'm talking about something like a larnor osawatomie to be able to treat the folks locally. So that's one issue. Then people get that confused with us trying to get funding for a campus such as they have down in San Antonio, that we can take care of people with behavioral health issues and homelessness. So that's a separate issue. The third issue is I'm going to talk about here during other... And that's some type of a health science center here in the region. And that's a very expensive proposition if we can move forward on it. So I appreciate the work that Meitzner and Commissioner Cruz are doing, trying to help with the Association of Cities. But when we're talking about it, we've got to be very careful. We're talking about three separate things. They're not combined. They kind of are interrelated, but they're completely different. So Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, for bringing that up. Yeah, I was pleasantly surprised when the mayor of Park City actually made the suggestion. I mean, we didn't even make the suggestion. It was... We explained the situation, and it was brought up by the mayor of Park City. So I appreciate, and I just want to kind of give a shout out to Laura, because she did this on the weekend. I mean, we had a draft on Sunday and then worked to get it completed. And I believe one city has actually maybe already passed it. And then the other nine are going to put it before their council. So I think that's a huge show of coordination and also collaboration between the cities in Sedgwick County. And I'm hoping, over the next week or so, to contact the other mayors of the additional 20 cities, or, excuse me, the 10 cities that weren't in attendance, to see if they... 20 cities, or excuse me, the 10 cities that weren't in attendance, to see if they would be willing to do the same. That's, that's a big deal. If we could get the, the cities that represent Sedgwick County as a whole to see the significance of a state-funded regional mental health hospital, quite frankly, because we have folks who need care now. And that is not only for the inmates, but also the folks who are working in our jails. So I appreciate having that conversation on Saturday and a shout out to Valley Center for hosting. But thank you so much. That's, that's all my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Any other comments during committee reports? Seeing none? Next item, please.
Other.
Commissioners, anyone have anything during other today? Are we ready for communications? Oh, very good. Well, this slide, this presentation was put together very rapidly. Go ahead and go to the next one. I'm going to talk about the Phoenix biomedical campus. I had a very short notice that I had an opportunity to fly to Phoenix with Dr. Muma and six of his staff. So yesterday morning, we got on a really nice little jet. And when I talk about little, it's little, but it's fast. So we left yesterday morning and two hours later, we were in Phoenix. And this is some of the folks from Dr. Muma and his staff that was on the trip. Once we landed, we went to a facility, the beginning of the Phoenix biomedical campus. And the next few pictures I'm going to show you were taken from the top floor of a building that was built by a private contractor, Wexford, but it's part of this campus. And this whole idea started about the year 2000, when the mayor came in and initially they were going to clear some space downtown in order to build sports complexes downtown. And so they put together, we'll just stay on that slide for a minute, and then I'll talk about what we're looking at on those slides. But I want to give you a little background before I go through what I saw from, from the rooftop. But the sports complexes, they ended up putting out in the, in the, outside of the main part of the city. And so they had seven acres downtown. And the mayor came on and said, hey, we need to develop this and we need to develop it as a biomedical campus downtown. And he got bonds voted on and they bought all this land and started building a campus. And it has continued to grow. And the campus was designed around five hospitals that we'll see in some of the pictures here that are located, including the Veterans Administration is one of the five hospitals. And they put together a team of five universities to, to do this. And so it really, the main amount of funding that came from this came from the city through this bonding process. And it continues to this day. But let's go through a few of the slides here real quick and I'll show you. I'm on the top floor of this biomedical building. And what you see in the distance are some of the other hospitals that are partners in this. And then just, and then you're going to see all around this building that I'm in is construction. And so what it's meant is that not only has this developed into a huge education center, a huge resource, research center, and a huge place that we can, that they can actually treat the, the community, but around it is also building up with housing because of all the thousands of people that are working there now. It's building up with restaurants, recreation, everything else that would make this community grow. And remember, Phoenix is over 3 million people. It's fifth largest city in, in the United States. So when I'm talking, if we do something like this here, it's going to be on a smaller scale, but it's still going to have a huge transformational impact on the region. And that's what's happening there. So I'm on the top floor. Stop there for a minute because the building you see in between is another great idea that they had. And they decided, hey, let's put a middle school and a high school right there on campus that is focused is biomedicine. So they're growing it right there. The kids that enroll in that middle school and a high school then can go straight into one of the five colleges that are located with them. So we keep on going around. I'm just walking counterclockwise around the building. And you'll see every place that you look near this building on this seven-acre side is construction. Go ahead. And this is another building looking off one of the other directions. Go ahead. And then as you see in the distance, you're going to see some of the entertainment, the restaurants and so forth down below, but then that's a big hospital that's in the distance. Okay? And I probably can't read any of this, but this is one of the slides that they showed. And what it shows is the huge, huge economic impact that this concept is having on the regional community. So it's billions. It's not millions. It's talking billions and thousands and thousands of workers. Go ahead. And this is kind of what they're developing. All of these little spots that you see on this slide are buildings that are being built or already exist. I do have a handout that they gave me that shows kind of the same kind of thing, but it is just booming. Go ahead. So then we took a walking tour and we went over to a couple of the actual buildings that are used for the education and research. And this is, this is a couple of the buildings that we see for education and research. And again, this is another place where that you see huge cranes because they're building every place. Go ahead. And I can't read it from here, but this is the University of Arizona, or is this, okay, this is the University of Arizona building that we went into. And go ahead and you'll see, this is one of the physical therapy training rooms. They have a number of different colleges, and I'll try and go through my notes here in a minute to show you what they are, but I just wanted to show you what some of the classrooms look like. And this is one for some additional therapy training for the students. Go ahead. Go ahead. And then we're standing down below where the two of the universities come together on the seventh floor, the one on the left is actually the entire floor is the Veterans Administration, where they have some offices and some education facilities that they can work. Go ahead. That's the building that's got VA in it. Okay? And then I'm up on the top floor of the, of the building that we just saw. And again, you can see some of the construction that's going on in the area. And they have all kinds of rooms for the students where they can sit down and study together. There's open areas like you see here. There are areas that are closed, glassed in, that are quiet, that students can gather in order to be able to study together or study in private. Okay? This is another physical therapy room. And let me try and pick up a couple of my notes real fast, just to give you kind of a hint. And I wish I'd had time this morning. I flew out yesterday and flew back yesterday, so I got back kind of late. But Creighton University is there and they have a doctor of physical therapy. Northern Arizona University is there. Arizona State University has health, nursing, journalism, management, public services, law. The University of Arizona has medicine, management, pharmacy, public health, law. Northern Arizona University, PA, physical therapy, occupational therapy and sports therapy. They do have a memorandum of agreement between the different universities. Tufts University has a doctorate in physical therapy. So the main thing that they're looking at is that they're building for the future and trying to rejuvenate that area downtown. And it, the economic impact is absolutely amazing on what is going on in that area. So this is the concept that Dr. Minz and Dr. Muma are looking at here, but it doesn't mean that those are the only two universities that might end up being involved. I'm sure our DO school is going to be involved in what's going forward. And we can look to the future and other universities around the central part of the United States may also want to join in this project as we move forward. But it's expensive, yeah. The initial request is about 200 million. They're hoping to get out of ARPA funding as they move forward with that. And, but again, ARPA funding, we've got to have it pretty well figured out by 2024 and spent by 2026. And so we need the support at the state level in order to see if we can get the 200 million to start this project here in downtown Wichita. So I just wanted to give you a brief idea of what I was able to see. I've been excited about it since the first time that Dr. Muma talked to Commissioner Meitzner and I about it. We've heard more about it after that. And then one seat came open on an airplane yesterday morning and they asked me if I'd like to join them. And I said, certainly. So I jumped on a plane and two hours later, we were in Phoenix and spent the entire day there. And then two hours later, I was back home last night. So I apologize for not having time to get my notes together to give you a little bit prayer briefing, but I kind of wanted to give you an idea of what happened in Phoenix. And it can happen here. We just need to make sure that we have the, the local support in order to make it move forward. Commissioner Cruz, questions?
Yeah, just briefly. Thank you for that update. There's also a video on their website that's, shows the same images that you just showed us. So my question is, you talked about the Spark funding that they're going after. Is that, because there was 700 and some million dollars available, but there were over, gosh, what was it, like $8 billion worth of requests or something? So when, do we know when they plan to make those decisions? Like what, what is the, the deadline of sorts as to when we'll know? That's my main question because we had talked, and there has been discussions around crisis, maybe co-locating with this location. And I want to know, like, what the timeframe would be, if there is one. I know you don't have a crystal ball, Tom.
We don't. And we're monitoring, and I'm looking for Lindsay, but I think we're watching very carefully. I, I think they've mentioned it may be this fall before they actually begin to designate buckets. They're going through the same thing on a larger scale that the commission's going through right now with how do you allocate these dollars of ARPA. So their, their committees are all meeting. They're having discussion. You know, part of the, part of the allocating of that state money is for transformational kinds of projects that have a tremendous impact on the state of Kansas, which is pretty much just what the chairman described happening here. They have a $60 million ask in for Spark and I think another 30 million in for a base grant. So, and then the rest of that money is we'll have to, we'll have to figure out where it comes from. But we're hoping, because it impact, we have Spark requests in ourselves as well, so we're hoping for information back by fall.
Okay. And then were you able to, I know that that was a very fast trip, so you probably focused just on this campus. But did they talk about how their, their unhoused population, their mental illness? Did they talk anything about how that directly relates to those services?
Well, that's one of the things that Dr. Muma and I discussed is that right now, our pipeline for social workers is this big, but our need is this big. And so that's one of the concepts is that they want the crisis center co-located with this new health science center here in, in Wichita. And so that as the people go through the training, it'll, and we're talking about people that require a small amount of training, be coming out of WSU Tech, people who require more coming out of one of the universities, all the way up to the doctorate level for psychiatrists, psychologists and so forth, all coming under this umbrella. And then having our crisis center right there, they can get real-time experience, right, in our crisis center co-located with this campus. So that's what the idea is. And as I mentioned, that this is not, this campus that they have is not just a biomedical, although that's what the title shows. As I said, they've got business administration classes, they've got law classes. They teach a lot of different classes on that campus. So social work is part of that, you know, starting at every level that we need social work, they're planning on having programmed in order to be able to teach those folks.
I'm excited about this. I mean, I'm absolutely supportive. I just want to make sure that if the funding isn't secured, we still have to move forward with crisis. And so we need to, you know, understand that that is, you know, our responsibility to figure that out. So I, I hope it goes forward. I'm very excited. I know the need is there. I just hope that we, as a county and the largest mental health provider, can pay our folks to stay and do the work with us. Getting an education is one point, but if they come here and aren't paid to, to stay, that's, that's just something we'll have to figure it out. But I know that we're working on it and budget isn't going to be easy this year, but I know the focus on compensation is a huge focus for us. So I just, I hope that we can make it happen.
Well, when we were talking with the president of the University of Arizona, he said that 75% of the people that they put through the program stay there after they graduate. And Dr. Muma felt the same way, that if we can get something like this created, we can keep the vast bulk of them right here in this region. So it's important project for us to move forward. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you started off by talking about the mayor of Phoenix initiated the vision and somehow was able to get bond financing. Is that what you said?
Correct.
So are these buildings owned by the city of Phoenix?
What they do is that all of the ground right now is owned by the city of Phoenix. And then they build the buildings and then there's some kind of an agreement at a certain point, then they turn it over to whoever is, is in that building at that time.
So it may be a little bit different here in Kansas, but if I understand correctly, the ground and the buildings that are our public, that are, are our public universities are completely owned by the state of Kansas. So I don't know if the, if the configuration of a campus like that here would have to be much different. In other words, I think this has to be run, would have to be basically driven by the state of Kansas more than any type of local, if we provided land, for example, I don't know how that, how that would play out unless we would give it to the state for the purpose. But are you asking the BOCC to do anything particular, anything in particular regarding this vision for having a campus like this here in downtown Wichita?
In April, they're going to take a larger group of folks down there. And I think the BOCC needs to go down and see it and decide what kind of support that we can provide. But right now, the only thing we've talked, been talking to them about is co-locating our crisis center in their facility as they move forward. And then, and back to your point about the state of Kansas owning it, the Regents in Arizona are really the driving force behind us. And we're going to have to have the Regents here in Kansas being a driving force behind it here.
It's interesting. It seems like in the last decade, I've heard repeated discussions regarding KU threatening to pull out of the Wichita area in terms of not providing that school that they currently have here. That that's, in other words, has been threatened in the past that they would potentially remove that from the Wichita area. I think the number one reason why it's still there primarily is because we have some very powerful legislators in the right places in the legislature that has actually done a great job, I think, defending that KU campus here in Wichita. But it is not, it is an older building and I know that they are not thrilled with that building. And we also have the pharmacy school that's here currently. It's also a KU program. But those programs have been threatened in the past. And so I'm just curious if Dr. Minz represents a commitment by KU that they are dedicated to investing, if you will, a larger program here in the Wichita area? I mean, Dr. Minz being on that plane is great, but I'm curious about, do we have any type of confirmation from KU as an organization that they're supporting, if you will, an expansion here in the Wichita area?
Well, Dr. Minz was on a Zoom call with me a week or two ago. I'm now on an organization called For Wichita, which supports KU. I'm now on an organization called For Wichita, which supports KU, and he is definitely in support of this.
Okay. And we have that verbally, or is there something?
He was on the conference call, but this is still a concept right now. We have to move, you have to have the funding before we can do anything, just like Arizona and Phoenix, until they had funding, nothing was going to happen. Until we have funding, nothing's going to happen here.
And I think it's also interesting, if we talk, continue talking about a state mental health facility in the Wichita or Sedgwick County region, that if KU does end up finding a better campus to move into, I think that new campus would be completely reconstructed, it'd be brand-new construction, I would assume, but the building they currently have over on Ninth Street then becomes available. And I don't know if we've ever looked at that building as being, is it sized correctly for the needs of a state mental health hospital? I don't know if it's, but it's, I even, the state legislature, even last week when they had the debate, actually it was in the Kansas, the House of Appropriations Committee had a debate regarding this entire topic on the regional mental health hospital, and they actually mentioned that facility in that discussion as being an option for this purpose. And so do we know whether or not that building would be sized correctly for a regional mental health hospital?
We have submitted to Spark a request. We've also submitted a one-page or two, Jason, to articulate this idea. So we know square footage and we know approximate cost of new build. Any of those types of other use of current facilities in the region has not been discussed because there is no funding yet. I think anything is fair game, and as of today, KU's using that campus. I don't know that, even if this would come to fruition, we're looking at years, generations of work to build this. So any of those types of drill-down kinds of discussions have not happened yet, Commissioner. I don't know, we could surely go get a quick look at the square footage up there and parking and determine if it fits the, our ask for the footprint. And there may be others, there may be others in the facility, in the region that would fit the bill of a mental health hospital if the state chooses to bring a component here.
I think we're kind of premature in deciding what's going to happen with a building that we don't even know if it's going to be vacated at this point in time. The whole purpose that I brought this up today was to say that there is something out there in another community that is a huge economic benefit, it's a huge educational project, it's a huge research project, it serves the community, and we can have something like that here possibly. But all these other decisions, they're all predicated on whether or not that we can get the community and the state behind trying to fund some kind of biomedical facility here. So we can come up with all these what-ifs, but now is not the time to come up with what-ifs. Now is the time for us to say that we support trying to locate a health science center of some sort here in Wichita.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your comment. I just, there's two independent conversations, but they come together potentially with that idea. I think it's important for us to understand the options. So as we talk about this, it becomes more sellable. If you, if you provide a turnkey idea, if you will, that talks about a new campus for the health sciences, and you have a plan that's been clamored for by this community for a mental health facility, and there's a, it ties into that solution as well, to me, it's more sellable. So I think it is relevant, in my opinion. I think I'd like to understand exactly what that building offers in terms of space, because I think it's part of the conversation. That's my opinion. That's fine. I think it's, as we, as we talk about the high-level vision here, I think it's just an important part of the puzzle. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate you all indulging me and trying to give you a very quick briefing. Again, I wish I'd have had time to get my notes together a little bit better to explain what's going on in Phoenix, but the main thing I was trying to do is let the public know that something like this is possible. And if we don't know what's possible, we're not going to get anywhere as we move forward. So I appreciate the time. I see nothing else for other. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until 10:55. All right, 10:00 or 11:00, we could say, if we can take a bathroom break in there, to discuss personnel matters and non-elected personnel involving a discussion of disciplinary action for certain county employees, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:00.
I'll second that. Any discussion? See none, Mr. Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
And we're going to the other room? Okay, we'll see you down there. Thank you.
We have just returned from executive session. Commissioner Lopez, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess back into executive session for an additional 20 minutes until 11:22 to discuss the personnel matters of non-elected personnel involving a discussion of disciplinary action for certain county employees and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:22.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Any none, Mr. Clipkall, roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. We are back in recess till 11:22. We are back in recess until 11:22. Welcome back. I'd like to call a meeting back to order. We just came out of executive session. I'd like to notify everyone that no binding action was taken during executive session. Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission today? See nothing or adjourned? Thank you.